Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to call to order the budget presentation meeting of May 13, 2019. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Goh.
Here.
Vice Mayor Parlier. Councilmember Rivera. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir. Councilmember Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
And Councilmember Sullivan.
To comply with the BRNAQ, we'll receive public statements now. All statements are given. A three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per subject. Please limit your comments to the workshop items only. Are there any public statements? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Under Items Three Workshops, Item A, Department Budget Presentations. The first presentation, number one, General Government.
Mr. Hewat, welcome.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. Chris Hewat, City Manager's Office. This is my last budget presentation for the time right now, so I'll try to move through this quickly. I'm talking to you today about the detailed budget for the Legislative Section of the City, as well as the Executive Department. First, the legislative component of the organization comprises of the Mayor's Office and City Council. You see the City Manager's Office, City Clerk's Office, Human Resources, Risk Management, and Tech Services comprises the Executive Department of the organization. Just quickly, a little bit about the Mayor's Office and City Council budget. You'll notice not too substantially different year over year. Staff is proposing a total combined budget of about $417,421, about a 2.6 percent increase. I made some notes there at the bottom of the slide. There are just a few minor increases that you should be aware of. We're seeing our membership dues for the League of California Cities increase year over year. And then also, there are some rental rates. It's a system that we use to charge each department for certain equipment that's used by that department. In this case, there's a proportional share of the new technology that we're utilizing here in the council chambers, and that's new. But again, not much change year over year. Travel, training, all that is pretty much status quo for the time being. And then again, this is a little bit separate than what we talked about last time. There's also the council contingency, which is not reflected in this, but it's in the non-departmental budget of about $100,000 for next year, which is an increase from about $25,000. A little bit about the Executive Department. This is how we're currently structured. You have the City Manager, two Assistant City Manager positions, executive staff, and then you have the five different divisions. Visit Bakersfield is somewhat separate from our division in terms of budget presentations. You'll hear from them a little bit later, so I do not include those numbers in what you're seeing here today. A little bit about our accomplishments. The Human Resources Division is continuing to offer supervisor and other training throughout the city. This has been a focus of the last year regarding leave management and ADA requirements. Those are two areas that our HR Division has been focused on in doing continual outreach to our staff to ensure compliance. Also, again, working with the Police Department to improve testing and test dates and acceptance scores for the Police Department. This is obviously going to be critical as we move into the first phase of the Public Safety and Vital Services Measure. So they've been working at that over the last year and beyond. Risk Management. They, in two highlights that I wanted to share with you, they're continuing to aggressively pursue recoveries from individuals or parties that may have caused damage to city property. And you see some numbers here for the last couple of years. They continue to be good stewards in protecting city assets and facilities through the recovery program. They're also focused on safety as well of the employees. And in this case, they facilitated a process where they had advanced care wellness come in and do some informational trainings related to heart health. And they were actually able to go through a process where those employees that were deemed at risk through some testing were able to get further testing and referrals. And so again, just one way, we're trying to be more proactive in terms of health and safety with our staff. Technology Services had a busy year. They're working to implement electronic timekeeping systems for departments, which is going to reduce paperwork, reduce some of those redundant entries that staff currently has to do, making timing for our employees a little more standardized. Also, if you've noticed, they've expanded the use of the social media and video productions. This past year, you probably saw the 10-minute documentary, I'm calling it, that they did for Rabobank Arena in the 20th anniversary. This team, our media team, has been very, very busy highlighting all the great projects and programs that the city has, and we anticipate they will continue to be busy through the next year. Also, working closely with the Police Department, as we talk about here in the upcoming weeks, about implementing body-worn cameras for all the officers. They have been, last year, very much involved in that process with the Police Department, getting that pilot program up and going. Clerk's Office. They oversaw the election on November 6. That included four council seats and two citywide measures. They actually did some work over the last year and a half to retool how we do mailing within the organization. That doesn't sound very exciting, but I assure you that it is because we were able to save about $11,000 a year in changing the way we do that. So thanks to the Clerk's Office for that, as well as they worked in lead along with Tech Services, doing all the different upgrades you see here today in the chambers, and as well as the voting system and some things behind the scenes to make our processes more efficient. City Manager's Office. Talk a little bit about the Vital Services Measure. Led the outreach efforts related to the Vital Services Measure. Implemented the measure along in coordination with the State of California, which is a paper-heavy coordinating-type process. Led the efforts, along with our Public Works staff and the TRIP team, to bring the two largest TRIP programs, projects to the construction phase without the need to borrow any funding. Coordinated the effort in relationship to the Regional Branding Effort, along with the Chamber of Commerce, the County, and other partners. And we continue to place high priority and emphasis on implementing the city's ADA Transition Plan, related to ensuring that our public infrastructure and city facilities are in compliance or coming into compliance with the ADA Act. Let's talk a little bit about the numbers real quick. I broke these down into two sections. We'll focus on the blue section on top first. That is showing you the difference year over year from the adopted to the proposed budget as it relates to the different divisions within the Manager's Office. So you see some percentage changes on the right side, anywhere from 3 to about 30 percent. And I'll get into some detail here in just a moment. A lot of those percentage changes are driven by the fact that there is now Public Safety and Vital Services Measure. Funding proposed for some of these departments mostly related to support services needs of the measure. So you'll see down at the bottom, again, that same number down at the bottom totaling $26.1 million for these different divisions, but you'll see it broken down by source with that new line for the Public Safety Vital Services Measure, just over $1.4 million. Again, that's generally driving some of these cost increases that staff is proposing. So talk a little bit about the dollar amounts associated with the measure and the increases that staff is proposing. Two areas within this department. First is Human Resources. The second is Technology Services. Both of these divisions are vital to the successful implementation of that measure plan we're talking about. HR, as you're all aware, provides guidance. They essentially support all the hiring and retention processes that we go through. And we are proposing about 126 positions with the measure, 142 overall in next year's budget. So they're going to be critical in making sure that we can get through those processes successfully and hire and retain those individuals that are going to be providing those enhanced services. Technology Services, they do everything behind the scenes related to telephones, computers, radios, hardware, software. They are the team that provides support to all of our departments in terms of the technology they use to complete their tasks. Technology Services, just a little bit more real quick. Right now, they have 37 staff that supports over 1,500 full-time staff members, 8,000 devices, 2,300 two-way radios, 1,100 computers. They're supporting, again, over 430 mobile data computers used by our public safety agencies, 356 software applications. And they secure over 400 terabytes of data on an annual basis, which is significant, and it's growing. Rather than maybe looking at this slide, we set up a little demonstration down here in front of us, in front of me. And this is essentially all the equipment that is allocated or provided to a patrol officer from Technology Services. So everything from the MDC that is in their vehicle to the radios that are both in the vehicle and then on the individual, body-worn cameras, phones, license plate readers, docking stations. This is all the equipment that is assigned normally to one officer. And so, as I list a little bit of that on the left side of the screen and on the right side, behind the scenes is not just the equipment, it's all the software that is run on those, these pieces of equipment that's supported by our staff. And you'll see a list on the right side there. Couple of projects that are within the measure and in the budget that they're going to be supporting is the Joint Regional Public Safety Digital Radio System Upgrade. Again, the full deployment of body-worn cameras for the Police Department. We've talked about an e-permitting project, which is essentially going to move towards an online workflow-type system for development-related permits, which will hopefully reduce the time to process, as well as create kind of more of a comprehensive review of those permits as they move through the process. We're going to be enhancing the mobile reporting systems for those rapid-response teams we talked about last time, which includes an update of our mobile app, Bakersfield Mobile. And then every new facility or expansion that we're proposing through the budget includes some sort of technology that will need to be either upgraded, enhanced, or expanded. So again, that is why we are proposing 11 new positions within the Technology Services Division. One supervisor, four analysts, that are going to support many of those technologies and software initiatives for the public safety agencies and the other departments. Five technicians. Those technicians provide the direct support for all the new personnel. So if there's an issue with an MDC or a radio, those are the staff that are going to be helping out, making sure that that police officer, that firefighter, has the equipment they need. And then one engineer is proposed for additional data security. As you are well aware, security of the city's data is top of mind, and we want to ensure that we're abiding by best practices. Having additional engineer will help us do that. So as proposed, 11 positions, a little over $1 million. We think this is a prudent investment, again, given the reliance on technology that all of the staff in the city has each and every day. Human Resources. Quickly, no significant staffing changes since 2010, although our recruitments are up on an annual basis between 2015 and 2018 by about 60 percent. We're shooting for about a 10 percent turnover. We're not shooting for it, but that's what's occurring, about 10 percent turnover annually. And then, as you all are aware, the hiring process for the public sector is drastically different than that of the private sector. So there are civil service rules, multi-level interviewing processes that have to occur. And then there are public safety procedures for hiring that are specific to police and fire that require a significant amount of staff time and involvement. And this is just a brief overview of the different steps and tests and requirements of just hiring a police officer that is required. And our HR staff is involved in pretty much every one of those steps. So if we have 40 slots and we have 1,000 applicants or more, at some point, you know, it's a, they've got to work through these processes to fill those 40 slots. So with that, we're proposing the addition of three positions to be funded by measure N, Public Safety Vital Services Measure. I note that during the mid-year budget process, this council approved two out of three. What we're trying to do is provide some transparency to show you that if the budget is approved as is with, in relationship to HR, these two positions, the supervisor and the analyst positions, will be transitioned to Public Safety Vital Services Measure funding next fiscal year. So again, the supervisor would help augment the benefits activity of the division, both related to healthcare and other benefits. Looking to move to an e-service system where some of these processes can be done online, kind of a self-service module, but there'll need to be oversight related to that. Get analyst, boots on the ground, helping with recruiting and examination activities, conducting background checks, reference checks. So the one analyst is really going to go a long way in helping us get through these new positions and get them onboard. And then the clerk to provide some additional administrative assistance within the division related to databases and personnel files. Proposed, the position's total cost of about $333,000. There's some additional costs that we need to budget within the measure for medical exams, testing materials, and advertising. We're estimating that at about $55,000 for the next fiscal year. Total proposal for the HR Division of $388,000. Just a couple more slides before I turn it back over. In the Risk Management Division within the Self-Insurance Fund, staff is proposing an additional administrative analyst position at the total cost of about $80,000. This is funded through the Self-Insurance Fund. It's a restoration essentially of a position that was eliminated due to downsizing, you know, 10 years ago or so. This position is critical as we've continued to grow, the different programs grow, the organization. There is a need for additional staff to help manage the workers' compensation, liability, and property programs. And again, with the measure coming onboard, that's going to, again, that's going to, again, have an impact on these programs. And so this request would assist the Risk Management Division in continuing to manage those programs and that fund properly. In the City Manager's Office, we talked a little bit about this last meeting. Staff is proposing one position, a Public Information Officer position. At $112,000, this is non-measure funded within just the general fund. For the past several years, as you may know, the city has not had a standalone Public Information Officer position for general media and communications activities. And this responsibility has been most recently shared, but just by various members of the City Manager's Office, depending on the topic area. So this would add a position to respond to day-to-day media inquiries, to help coordinate various news and city social media platforms, create that cohesive approach to public information and media relations, and raise awareness of really all the great work that staff is doing throughout the year in relationship to the City Council's goals, policies, programs, and making sure the external stakeholders are aware of that work. So as I wrap up, this kind of gives you an idea for the Executive Department, staffing levels. '08, '09, '69, full-time staff. Around '15, '16, the Communications Division that was in the Public Works Department came over and was merged with our Tech Services Division. So that's why you see the uplift there. That was solely due to that merger. So you see the difference here is the positions going from '66 to '80, as proposed next year, which includes those Public Safety Vital Services Measure positions that I previously mentioned. This just wraps up with an org chart as proposed for next fiscal year, showing that new Public Information Officer position within the City Manager's Office. So with that, I will wrap up my presentations. Myself and division staff from these different divisions are here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Councilmember Freeman.
Just sort of a general question. Are these, the increases we have this year in the various departments, well, it'd be better, actually, would you, as you explain these, tell us which ones where we'll be adding additional next year? Because we have a two-year program here, and which ones, for example, it's a technology, I think it's 11 people. Are we fully staffed at that? Because we don't have another chart here to show us, oh, no, there can be another five next year. We're the same in City Manager, any of these offices? Because there's so much support staff in the two-year rollout that I think we're going to need some help in knowing that, it's understandable, the first year you have to staff up. You know, we need all these technol, we need another 11 the following year. So if you could give us some perspective on which of these are, this is kind of it we've staffed up, and which of them are, we could expect another big increase next year?
Sure. Councilmember Freeman, the 11 that are included, again, are proposed to be added next year, I believe, and I don't recall off the top of my head, but I know we have a plan in the following year that may, that would add some additional Tech Services staff, and I'd be happy to get you that information. I don't have it committed to memory.
Well, okay, just in general, I understand we needed the person in the City Manager's Office, I think, for, you know, publicity and communication. But would we have another one the following year? So just give us some perspective on these things. How many are kind of one-time? And just a general comment, I found in the last recession, well, I've got through about four of them, I'm so old, that after the recession, well, during the recessions, we all had to learn to manage differently. And it's no different in the public sector than the private, do more with less. But as we came out of the recession on what I would call support staff, not line-in-the-field type people, you know, we had to build houses, we obviously needed superintendent. But we didn't need near as much support staff because we all learned to manage different. You've been through the exact thing, the private sector, and I just think as a council, we have to be careful, and as a department heads, that, you know, we put in formulas for what we expect to do for the next two years. But as we boot up, I'm hoping we find that we had to learn to manage differently during the downturn, and then in some of the support staff positions, we won't need the formula-based, you know, for each police officer, we need a half of a support staff or whatever. Because I'm getting a lot of, my experience tells me that, and I'm getting a lot of public input on, gee, we knew we moved 100 police officers. We didn't know there were another 50 support staff to go with them, just simply in a public perception. But I think we will probably find that we are a little more efficient and don't need quite the number of support staff that historically, going by formulas, we need. So that's just something, it's a general comment that I think we all should watch as we move into the following year, not this year.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Hewat, for your presentation. One of the things that excites me the most about this presentation that was embedded throughout is the intentionality regarding technology enhancements throughout the city. So we have the e-permitting project, which we've heard from many folks who work with the city that they've been asking for. So I'm really encouraged by that. We talked about the e-service system for Human Resources. We've discussed in the past park reservation systems online, things that make it more efficient for government to do its job, but also make it better for the end user. And I'm really encouraged by all of those examples. My question is, we are budgeting for four additional analysts in Technology Services. Will there be an opportunity for us to review systematically the city and various different departments to see how we can continue to enhance our technology in order to become more efficient?
Councilmember Gonzalez, if, speaking, Mr. Tandy may want to provide additional comment. I can tell you, over the last year or so, maybe a little bit longer, there's been a very much renewed interest in finding different ways that we can utilize technology to make staff more efficient and to provide better services to the public. And I feel as though that the organization continues internally to look at different ways. And Director of Technology Services, Greg Ponomos, may agree with me here, that his office is inundated with questions and discussions and meetings about how best we can utilize technology and where it makes the most sense. So that's my long-winded way of saying we are, we are turning over every rock to identify technology that will make services and programs more efficient for the city internally, as well as the public.
And Councilmember Gonzalez, I would add to that. We have been deferring things that we had researched because of lack of financial capacity. So we have been working on this new radio system, which is for the city, I think, 17 million over two years, and for the county, maybe 46 million, for four or five years. But only now do we have the financial capacity to pull the trigger. We talk about it kind of casually. It's just another bullet point, but that is a massive
Sure.
consumer of time, energy, and effort, changing out all the hardware on all relay stations all over the metro area, as well as the radio units and a lot of the on-building base relay information itself. Similarly, the permitting system has been deferred and known and understood, and we've been researching. So we are now in a mode of trying to catch up and implement the things which we have known about that were available. But we don't ever stop research on new innovations. We follow the magazines, the educational material, and we try not to be the first at something, because that often leads to disaster. But we do try to be aware of changing technology so that when it's established and referenced, we're there and ready to go on the next, on the next change.
I appreciate that. You know, technology continues to advance, and there are certainly ways that we can continuously improve. And I think that spirit of continuous improvement is one that we ought to, we ought to adopt. And it sounds like we are. So I appreciate it.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Hewat. I was just following up. I'd mentioned at the last council meeting, perhaps the City Manager's Office needed more personnel to serve the community and the council as we'd like. Is more thought being given to that, or where are we at on that?
You did, yes, you did mention that last meeting. We are in the process of evaluating it and identifying some potential recommendations.
And as we go through these sessions, and we see whether the list is three things or 43 things, we will evaluate them all and intend to come back to you before the budget is adopted with the things that we think are most feasible and that are still within the confines of the budget.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I see that we have our District Attorney, Cindy Zimmer, in the audience, and the city, did I say city attorney? Or district attorney, sorry. The city attorney's budget is number four in the schedule. I'd like to move that up to be next. I may have some questions regarding the old Community Prosecutions Unit, and DA Zimmer might be able to elicit some information regarding that, too. So I'd like to make a motion that we move the city attorney to next.
You have a motion? Please catch your votes. Madam City Attorney.
I didn't realize I was going to clear the dais. Good afternoon, Council, and thank you again for pushing my presentation earlier. I know that Cindy Zimmer is on her lunch, and I appreciate that. And I think you may have some questions about the Community Prosecution Program. So again, I am your city attorney, Virginia Gennaro. I will be making the budget presentation for 1920. With me is Andrew Cadrell. He is an administrative assistant with my office. So we start out with the first slide, as we usually do, which shows the organizational chart from my office. Again, we are very lean compared to other cities of our size, particularly in the top 10 cities. This is primarily because we rely heavily on the outside counsel in order to prosecute and defend our litigation. With regard to that litigation, our tort cases, as you know, you have under contract with outside counsel, Clifford &amp; Brown, through fiscal year 2020. You are also under contract with Martarosian &amp; Cohen to handle our police or our civil rights cases, also through July of 2020. And our water matters are being handled on an annual basis, flat rate, through Duane Morris. And those funds come out of the water or the enterprise funds. Our municipal accomplishments last year, you can see that we spent quite a bit of time, most of you participated in all of these ordinances, but of course, we had some significant revisions to the code relative to taxis. Again, that was was to follow recent, recent new enactments in the state law having to do with giving taxi cab companies more flexibility. Again, we also mirrored the changes in state law when it came to our sidewalk vendors, and we made some changes in the massage practitioner section of the code. Now, all practitioners must obtain a state-certified CAMTC certification. And then, the recycling centers was a result of the council referral, so that those types of businesses can only be allowed by right in convenience zones. With regards to the resolutions, this is just a small smattering of resolutions that our office handled within the last year, and again, those are primarily based upon council referrals, and some of them in an effort to qualify for state and federal grants. Litigation accomplishments, again, we do, even though we rely heavily on outside counsel for litigation, there are some matters that are handled in-house. I'm pleased to say that Mr. Rednick was successful in collecting over $27,000 in past due transient occupancy tax. He was also the inside counsel that monitored Kootak Rock and the validation action, which took care of the trip financing, and most of that now is, is finished and over with. Mr. Heglin coordinated with outside counsel in the trip litigation, which also included some eminent domain matters, and those matters, I'm pleased to say, are also almost completed. And all of the attorneys in the city attorney's office defend the police department, and they handled over 100 pitches motions last year. This is just a neat little colorful chart that we put in. All of the attorneys in my office are required to bill their time, as they would generally do in private practice. You can see no real surprises here. The city manager's office has a slight lead, and again, that's generally because they have the four divisions underneath them, the city clerk, the human resources, risk management, as well as technology services. And again, we spend a tremendous amount of time with the city clerk dealing with public records response, and there have been some new laws lately, and I would tell you that I think that's only going to continue to increase. Litigation accomplishments for our outside counsel, on par with years previous, we had four closed cases in the federal arena, two of them with absolutely no monies being paid by the city to either the plaintiff or the plaintiff's attorney in the state. Again, quite significant, we closed nineteen cases, ten of those without any monies being paid to the city. If you do the math, that leaves about eleven cases in which the city actually paid money, and I can tell you that in all of those cases, that was around $800,000, which was quite remarkable when you consider that of those eleven cases, three of them were civil rights wrongful death cases. Our budget for next year, as you've heard Mr. Huat on several occasions, it's going to be close to $611 million. Our percentage is extremely small, it's typically around 1%. You can see this year, it's about .62%. The major areas, again, are in the area of salary and benefits, and then the 1.6 is, again, for those outside counsel contracts excluding the water situation. Our significant changes, really not, not much, again, the city manager's office, the guideline was a 3.5% increase over last year. That totals a little over $128,000. We put that money, 30,000 of it, which was an increase in salary and, and benefits, outside of our control. The remaining money, we chose to place in our non-tort legal services line item, and what that basically does is, that account has been slowly diminishing over time. We'd like to put a little bit more money in there. That typically involves litigation involving either the California Public Records Act or SEQA, anything that, again, is non-tort-related. Our nineteen-twenty, excuse me, 2019, 2020 goals remain the same. We want to continue, in my opinion, our litigation posture with outside counsel. We will probably be coming to you at the end of this calendar year with renewals on both the Clifford and Brown, as well as the Martarosian and Cohen contracts. We want to maintain our municipal services, and again, where appropriate, use inside counsel to handle appropriate matters. When it comes to the Measure N funds, at this point, we are maintaining status quo with regard to the number of personnel in the office. There has been some discussion amongst some of you with me regarding the possible resurrection of the community prosecution program. Some of you may remember that that was an extremely successful program that lasted for about six years, from 2005 to 2011, and it originally was aimed at, I want to go back just one more, it originally was aimed at not only the, the prosecution of all code sections within your municipal code, but certain code sections under California state law in order to improve quality of life. And it actually, it actually began with, with Ward Two and Councilmember Benham years ago, because we were having particular problems in the Councilman Gonzalez's ward. Due to various reasons, primarily budget-related, that program dissolved in 2011, and again, if there is a desire to bring that program back into the fold, there are various options that we can do. We could go back to some of the original crimes that were prosecuted. That included, among other things, it included the Luden-Lasivious Acts, it also included public intoxication, vandalism. We've had some new things, obviously, that have occurred since 2011. Hopefully, those items underneath look familiar to you, but we could certainly then prosecute some of the illegal commercial cannabis activity. Some street racing has picked up in some of your wards. Massage and trespass violations could, could also be included in that. There are, again, a variety of, of ways in which to do that. We don't have to stick with the same program as we did back in 2005. I have been in discussions with the chief of police, as well as your district attorney Cindy Zimmer. We can phase the program in over time. I think a, an MOU with the DA is certainly a possibility, particularly when you consider that the 100 officers are going to be coming on board. They're not going to come on all at once, and so there may be some type of a phased approach that you may wish to pursue. So, at this point, I'm, I'm looking for direction from the council, but our budget is, as I presented it to you, I'm certainly open for any questions, but I'm going to continue to chat with you. I'm, I'm here if you have any, if you want to give me a call, or you want to discuss it with me or the city manager, and if you intend to pursue that, it, I think at the earliest would be some type of a mid-year budget adjustment.
And if I could add a comment, I've been cautious about this, but in the last thirty days or so, it looks like the DA's office, the sheriff's office, and perhaps even the judiciary are coming together with concepts for a new and innovative program that might be the most economical way to get some of these folks off the streets for a while. And if that does come through, I'm excited about it and would be happy to amend the city manager's proposed budget to include such a contract. I didn't want to do it when it was piecemeal or there was a missing link, but the trend recently has been very good, and I'm hopeful.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. And I agree with the city manager. I think there needs to be a holistic approach from the sheriff's department, city attorney, city manager's office, and our district attorney. Real quick, and this may fall outside the norm, Cindy, could I have you come down just for a second, please?
Good afternoon.
Thank you so much for attending today. And without drilling down too much on specifics, I know that staff has been talking to your office and vice versa. Do you think it aligns with what the city attorney said, having an in-house community prosecution unit, maybe having something, you know, where we fund or subsidize something through your office, or we have more of a holistic approach, where we're, we're dealing with, you know, maybe jail personnel? I don't know, but I just want to get your opinion on, on those topics.
Mayor Go, and members of the council, thank you very much for asking me to come today. We do appreciate you looking at this, because we anticipate we're going to need some help. We have generally seen when there are more officers on the street, there are more cases, because there are more arrests, and those come to our office for prosecution. We can guess what types of cases we think there are going to be, but we don't know for sure until that happens. But we know certainly they will have an effect on the quality-of-life crimes that we have seen in the past. We anticipate a lot more drug possession arrests, as well as driving and the influence arrests, possibly because law enforcement, for each contact they have with someone that they're going to arrest, the probability of there being a use of force goes up as well. And so, we see potentially the crimes against peace officers as well. The city manager was speaking about some of the things that we are in the beginning phases of looking at. We have a sect of our population that is horribly addicted, horribly addicted, and it's getting worse, and it's attacking our young people. Homelessness and addiction goes hand in hand, as well as mental health. I don't think we're doing enough. I think that a lot of people want to do something. We have a lot of good people in this city that want to do something, but I don't think that we're doing enough. And so, we are looking at that, the, the courts, the sheriff, the, the city and the mayor, we are getting together, and we're going to try to come up with something, especially since we do have some procedures in the past in the jail that have been able to deal with people who are horribly addicted, and who are homeless, or who are at, hugely at risk of becoming homeless. So, we're going to try to do something about that, and with some of our mental health partners as well. So, we have a lot, a lot that we're working on. If you have any more specific questions, I'll try to answer those, but that's what we're hoping that we can do in working with you and, and looking at the two, we're looking at the community prosecution program.
Thank you so much. I sure appreciate your attendance today, and I'm speaking for my colleagues, but I know they do, too.
Thank you.
Ms. Zimmer, do you see the community prosecution program, and then the program that Mr. Tandy was alluding to, as the same, or two different things? I know we've talked about the issue with homelessness, and then my conversations with the sheriff, and that as being a track that potentially could be something very beneficial for the homeless issue that we're facing. Do you see these as the same in terms of your needs and?
Excuse me, there's certainly some overlap. There, we do see an increase in arrests, in which we are going to need some help with the prosecution by having people out on the street. I mean, you can look at the statistics, anytime there are more officers on the street, you're going to have more arrests. But independent of that, independent of that, we do have to do something to help our horribly addicted, and I think it has to be not just a mental health approach, but a law enforcement approach. So, and as far as the way we have done it in the past, the program was successful. I had a part of that program from 2005 to 2011, but what we had at that time were city attorneys coming over, or people that were employed to come in by the city. I don't think that would be as effective as we had prosecutors that we hire, that we train, that we can look at some of our use of force, and we'd also like to have someone in our, our mental health court that would be prosecuting these cases and handling them and monitoring people who have some of these really horrific mental health and addiction problems. So, yes, there's overlap, but they are really independent.
Thank you. You know, certainly, the issues of addiction and mental health, those are key to progress in homelessness, and so, thank you for your efforts there.
Ellen, I really have a question for, I guess it'd be for city staff. I had a meeting the other day with a administrator from the sheriff's department, and we talked about a few things, along with what Ms. Zimmer said, too. And even though they may have several hundred available beds for, you know, people with quality-of-life crimes that potentially could stay there, they just don't have the personnel or staff to oversee them. But we, we kind of brainstormed a few ideas, and in that, just a lunch meeting, we, we really decided that, I thought that it might help if we developed sort of an ad hoc, that we had the DA's office, sheriff's department, mental health, us together in an informal, informal setting, to just sort of brainstorm some various ideas that might help, and then, from there, be able to determine exactly what we need, if it's something within a community prosecutions, you know, realm, you know, something along with Ms. Zimmer's comments, in line with the sheriff's department, or, you know, other avenues, or, or mental health. But everybody's on the same page. I think it might, it might help, instead of individual sort of conversations taking place.
I believe that's what's starting to take place, the, the positive cooperative discussions that I alluded to, reflect that that kind of dialogue is starting to take place, and I'm certainly encouraging continuing it and accelerating it and bringing clarity to it, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam City Attorney, do you have anything else? Colleagues? Oh, Councilmember Gonzalez.
I just had a quick question. So, I'm very interested in all this. What is the timeline now, or the next steps with regard to this conversation? When can we expect to hear more at the council?
Didn't bring the police, because I didn't know this was going to be on the, Jenny, in this forum today, and so, I, and I don't control district attorney or the sheriff, and they're on, they're on time schedule. But I will get back to you, and understand that there's a desire to pursue it as quickly as coordinating multiple offices allows.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And the next department? Visit Bakersfield.
Mayor, council, good afternoon. I'm David Lyman with Visit Bakersfield. Bonjour, buenos dias, guten tag, bom dia, bonjour, no, good day. It's my pleasure to, again, share a few minutes with you to tell you about some of our successes over the past year and our plans for the coming twelve months. Visit Bakersfield is a division of the city manager's office. We are funded solely through transient occupancy tax, or TOT revenues. We are not funded by any general fund monies, and we are an example of a successful public-private partnership between the city of Bakersfield and the Greater Bakersfield Convention and Visitors Bureau. A few of the board members are in our audience today, and I'd like to recognize them now. At the, your far left is Jenny Gatlin. She's the general manager of the Courtyard Marriott Hotel. She is the vice chair and incoming chair of the board beginning July 1st. Next to her is Lori Labarre. She's the director regional of sales for Doubletree Hotel by Hilton. Next to her is Denise Taylor, the director of sales for Hotel Rosedale. Across the aisle from them is Mr. Ed Dorsey, the assistant general manager of the Rabobank Arena Theater and Convention Center. Way back on your, your right is Nelson Smith, the finance director for the city of Bakersfield. He is the board chair, and I don't know where his location, oh, there he is, Chris Huat, he's the assistant city manager. So, I thank those from outside city staff for coming in this afternoon, taking some time out of their schedule. As you know, the goal at Visit Bakersfield, you hear me say it every year, our goal is to help people spend their money. Now, here is an organizational chart of our operation. I guarantee you, it's the simplest organizational chart you will see in your budget presentations, but make no mistake, we are a small group of people, but we make big things happen. Let's take a look. Tourism helps power Bakersfield's economy. That visitor spending creates and retains jobs and generates local sales tax and TOT revenues. That increased TOT, in turn, helps to support public safety and quality-of-life issues, efforts, and helps fund the city's capital needs. These increasing TOT revenues reflect the growth of Bakersfield's hospitality industry. Right now, there are three hotels under construction in the city limits of Bakersfield. In addition, three additional hotels have submitted plans to city planning. When all six of those hotels are completed, they will add 658 new rooms to Bakersfield's hotel inventory. Several of these under construction or proposed hotels will sport brands never before seen in Bakersfield, such as the Hyatt Place, home to suites by Hilton, and the Staybridge Suites. The former Clarion Hotel on Rosedale Highway has been gutted and rebranded as a Fairfield Inn and Suites by Marriott. Across the street, the Doubletree Hotel by Hilton, Bakersfield's largest, is undergoing a renovation far north of $10 million. Each of these projects, whether new construction or renovation, are funded solely with public sector dollars. No public funds were used, which is a testament to the investors' belief in the underlying strength of Bakersfield's hotel market. Our four-member team at Visit Bakersfield is very efficient and maximizes the effectiveness of our limited resources. Evidence of this is shown in the increases of the TOT that you see before you. In fiscal year 2018, the year we're in right now, the city's finance department estimates TOT will reach its highest level ever, $9.7 million. That's a 30% increase from the TOT total in fiscal year '05, '06. That's a 30% increase from the TOT total in fiscal year '05-'06. Those increases came from more conventions, more sporting events, and more individuals staying in Bakersfield hotels. In addition, in calendar year 2018, the number of hotel rooms sold in the Bakersfield market increased about 1 and 1/4%. The average daily rate the hotels charged increased almost 2 and 1/2%, and the hotel revenues increased more than 3.8% compared to the previous year. Let's take a look at the direct economic impact from staying in hotels in the city of Bakersfield. As you know, TOT in the city of Bakersfield is calculated as 12% of the hotel rate. I mentioned earlier, that rate this year is projected to be $9.7 million. When we divide the TOT figures by 12%, we get the amount of money the hotel customers spent on hotel room rates, more than $80,800,000. And when we add those two figures together, we get the direct economic impact of people staying in hotel rooms in the city of Bakersfield, more than $90,500,000. Remember, this is only the direct impact of spending on hotel rooms. It does not include spending on what I call the three F's. The three F's of food, fuel, and fun. Now what have we been doing to help increase the number of hotel stays in Bakersfield and help them spend their money? In the words of Elizabeth Barrett Browning, "Let me count the ways." First, we welcome visitors from all over the world. This chart shows you where our guests have been coming from, from the current fiscal year as of July 1st. They're listed in descending order from the upper left to the lower right. Clearly, we have more visitors from the United States, but scan the list and you might see some surprises. Remember, these are only visitors that came to our office and there's no rule that says you have to stop at the visitor center when you come to Bakersfield. This international travel market is one reason we opted for promotional spread in National Geographic UK Traveler earlier this year. We know the European travelers pass through Bakersfield, but we wanted them to know about us before they got on the plane so they could plan their itinerary to include our city rather than simply stumbling upon us. We also help people spend their money with our printed marketing materials. This is our premier publication, the Official Bakersfield Arrival Guide. It recently received an award of merit from the California Association for Local Economic Development in the Economic Development Promotions category. It's available at more than 80 locations throughout our city, including most hotels, RV parks, and the Amtrak station. Every week, we mail out lots of arrival guides and other materials in response to requests we get from people online, by phone, and by referrals from the Greater Bakersfield Chamber of Commerce. In addition to the Arrival Guide, we produce a number of other publications that you see here in response to requests we get from visitors and residents alike. Some of them are the Downtown Restaurant Guide, A Driving Tour, A Guide to Locally Crafted Beers, and Nearby Antique and Collectible Shops. Our website, visitbakersfield.com, is our flagship source for Bakersfield information. Whether on a desktop or any electronic device, visitbakersfield.com has information on all things Bakersfield. When you can't wait for your copy of the Arrival Guide to arrive by mail, you can read it online here. And for those poor souls who think there is absolutely, positively nothing at all to do in our city, I'm proud to tell you that we have an events calendar that highlights Bakersfield's many, many activities. We had information tables at both the CIF Wrestling Championships, at the Kern Water Summit earlier this year, providing information on Bakersfield to lots of people who stopped by, again, helping people to spend their money. At each event, our pop-up display was a hit. People wanted their photo taken in front of our big vintage Bakersfield postcard. We launched a holiday social media campaign featuring elves on a shelf visiting local businesses. Several organizations had elf-on-the-shelf campaigns this year, but how many were so successful that they actually had local businesses contacting them and ask if they could be highlighted? We did. Our campaign ran for 30 days and highlighted 21 local businesses. We added two more mini billboards or elevator doors. The first is for the new center of, the new name of the ICE Center, and the second is our first-ever Visit Bakersfield elevator door, not on city property. This is at the Kern County Raceway Park. We're working on improvements to the old Board of Trade sign along Highway 99. We have bids from local firms and I expect that should be completed by July. In addition to individual visitors, Visit Bakersfield facilitated a number of large events this past year. The CIF Boys Wrestling Championships returned and this year it was combined with the Girls' Championships that had been in Visalia, turning a two-day event into a three-day wrestling extravaganza. More than 16,000 people went through the doors at Rabobank Arena for this event in late February. The largest event that comes to Bakersfield every year is the Jehovah's Witnesses Convention, six weekends during the summer at Rabobank Arena, and each one brings about 6,000 delegates. That's each one brings about 6,000 delegates to Bakersfield. Bakersfield hosted the USA BMX Golden State Nationals a few weeks ago in early May here. We continue to host a variety of softball tournaments at Torino Home Sports Complex by Mesa Marin, Era Park, and other venues around Bakersfield. The Western Street Rod Nationals returned to Bakersfield in April with more than 1,500 entrants from throughout the nation. We hosted the Media Day for a winter showdown at Kern County Raceway Park in February for the fifth year running. The Bakersfield Fiesta brought its colorful square dancing back to Bakersfield in April for the 54th year. Sweet Adelines were in town recently at Rabobank Arena in May. And new for later this year, the HydroTurf Jet Jam Racing Tour will wrap up its season at Bakersfield's Lake Ming in August. Summer is a time when our events calendar is a bit light, so we were delighted to help bring this event to Bakersfield this year. For the events that are facilitated by Visit Bakersfield, let's take a look at the numbers. 89,750, that's the number of delegates from meetings booked during the current fiscal year that will be in town in this or future fiscal years. 62,400, that's the number of hotel room nights booked during the current fiscal year to be realized in this or future fiscal years. And $2.4 million, that's the estimated economic impact for events booked during the current fiscal year to be realized in this or future fiscal years. $24.2 million, that's a pretty good return on investment from a budget that has only one comma in it. In addition to our efforts to generate more customers, the Kern County Board of Trade's Information Center on Oak Street, the closure of that has increased demand in our office for our services. Because Visit Bakersfield is now the only staff visitor center in the area, we're fielding the telephone calls and in-person visitors that used to go to the Board of Trade, adding even more demand for us. With additional investment in Visit Bakersfield, there are opportunities to further spur our economy through increased visitor spending. That additional investment would support the following proposed work plan for the coming fiscal year. One, add one new senior sales representative position. This proposed position would be responsible for the following tasks. First, develop and implement an ambassador program for hospitality sector employees. More than ever before, the number of large events and new hotel rooms means we have the opportunity to sell Bakersfield to an increasing number of visitors. What hinders that effort is a lack of trained frontline employees at Bakersfield Hotels, RV parks, and attractions. That means that Bakersfield is failing to maximize the potential visitor spending and those additional potential visitor dollars are staying in their pockets to be spent somewhere else. This new position would also enhance partnerships with local lodging and other travel partners to create citywide promotional packages and printed collateral material. The new position would also implement a Restaurant Week program similar to those used in other cities. Restaurant Weeks increase tourism and boost customers for restaurants, hotels, stores, and other businesses. In California alone, more than 40 communities have Restaurant Weeks or Restaurant Months in 2019. Since I started to Visit Bakersfield, I wanted to do a Restaurant Week, but we've never had the staff resources to make it work and I would love to include Bakersfield on that list of other communities in California that have the successful program. This new position also would refine marketing efforts based upon market research to encourage visitor spending, create and retain local jobs, increase sales tax and TOT revenues. With new financial resources, we could enhance our existing marketing efforts. In a crowded marketplace, Bakersfield needs to stand out, to sell its assets, to attract and retain visitors. While we have a good product, potential customers need to know about us and what we offer. And we can reach those new customers by increasing our printed promotional products to reach more internal and external markets. Those efforts would include more print advertising, more printed material, and expanded geographical distribution of those materials, expanded visitor enhancement efforts throughout Bakersfield, not just downtown, a community-wide recognition effort using banners to welcome and promote large events to Bakersfield, and more elevator door wraps or mini billboards. We also can reach more customers by expanding our online and social media presence. We would outsource our social media efforts to develop content to distribute across a wide variety of platforms. In addition, our website is old and it needs overhauling. It debuted to Rave View Views in June 2015, but visitbakersfield.com is dated and with older photos and layouts. To generate more photographs and videos for online and social media efforts, we would contract out for the development of high-quality digital assets. We also would create audio driving tours that would be available online. These audio tours would replace the current printed driving tours. In addition to those proposed new activities, our proposed work plan would continue to target local residents who belong to professional organizations that hold regular regional and statewide meetings with a goal of attracting those meetings to our city. We also would continue to promote Bakersfield as a point of destination for both group and individual travel, and we would focus on what I call value-added tourism, attracting new events and visitors to Bakersfield, retaining existing events and visitors, and increasing the spending and tax revenue generated by those existing events and visitors. Our proposed budget request totals $1,032,659. Yes, mayor and council, for the first time, I'm requesting a budget amount with more than one comma in it. Our budget request breaks down as this. Salaries and benefits, $521,264, a 22% increase. Operating budget of $11,395, an increase of 47.9%. The total increase would be an increase of 33.6%. Our service level indicators are as follows. The estimated economic impact of events booked during the current fiscal year to be realized in this or future fiscal years would increase about 3% to $25 million. The room nights booked during the current fiscal year to be realized in this or future fiscal years would increase about 2 and 1/2% to $64,000. The number of delegates from meetings booked during the current fiscal year who will stay in Bakersfield in this or future fiscal years increased about 2.2% to $91,800. We'll attend one more trade show to promote Bakersfield as a convention, sports, and meeting destination for a total of 13, and we will be ready and eager to respond to requests for information, whether by phone, by internet, or in person, and those will be about 1,600. I expect that number to remain about the same as this year. This is the group that makes it all happen, Team More to Explore. Andrea Marlkeen is our guest services representative, also known as our director of first impressions. She also is our account clerk and handles our board agendas and minutes. Joe Simpson is our marketing and events specialist. He also acts as our business manager, prepares our budget, and also prepares and monitors our many agreements. Matt Billingsley, our senior sales representative, also known as our sales manager. Mr. Billingsley holds the coveted Certified Sports and Events Executive Designation from the National Association of Sports Commissions. There's only about 10 such people in California that hold that coveted designation. In addition, he is also immediate past president of the Central Valley Tourism Association, the only person from Kern County to ever serve on that board of directors. Just a few people, but wearing many hats. They're the people who do the hard work, who do the heavy lifting, who allow me to come before you each year and share just a few highlights of the way we promote Bakersfield as a place for people to come for a day, for a week, for a lifetime. And yes, a place to spend their money. I thank you for your kind attention today, and as always, I'd be happy to chat with you about any topic or any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, David, I look forward to your presentations every year. And I want to thank you for all the hard staff that you and your city staff do for the city of Bakersfield.
Thank you.
I'm glad you mentioned the Kern Visitors Bureau sign along the 99 that I'm sure it's going to look a lot better once we take it. Do you have any idea what it's going to look like?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, we're planning on, we're taking down the lower panel because that's very accessible for people to... And what we're going to do is we're going to put a graphic of that old vintage postcard that we have, and it will be in a case where we can slide in and out. That's what we're going to do, right? First, and we can always change it out later. But we've had such a great demand from that postcard, we can't keep it in stock. We have people wanting to take their picture and we said, okay, we're going to put that up there. So it's going to be visible on the front and back. We're focusing more on the north side because you can barely see it from the freeway, but it's quite visible from the Kern River Parkway Trail and the skate park and people using the park.
Wonderful. Look forward to that.
Send you pictures.
The airport. We have any inroads with the airport and doing advertisement and...
I, Mayor, Vice Mayor, I have been in contact trying to set up a meeting with the new airport director. As you can imagine, he's a busy fellow, and so we're trying to land on a date. And so, but I will continue to work with that, see if we can get that happening.
Okay. And the last thing is, and we talked about it, it's probably at least a year ago, when I was in Sacramento, like I said over a year ago, and I was just there recently and stayed in a different hotel, and the looped advertisement that's in the hotel really has a really good ambassador program for the city of Sacramento. And I don't know if there's been any follow-up contact with how they do that, but I think it's just a great program that, you know, I'm sure the hotels contract for it, but it really does advertise the city. And it's sort of set up on the same premise as the old California Gold Program where they have a person going around, you know, the chocolate shop or something to see, you know, and really draws people, I feel, into what's involved with that city.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, I will tell you, I've had some discussions with the local hotel people, including these ladies, and I won't put them on the spot, but what we're hearing from hotels, at least locally, is that they don't do a lot of those kind of things in the hotel. People tend to bring their own platforms, but we're looking at doing something similar to that, that you would not have to go into a hotel. You could do it, look on it on, say, YouTube or wherever. So the same kind of platform or the same kind of idea, but not just in hotel rooms, but anywhere.
And I just want to add too, I recently had about 20 visitors and family members that came to Bakersfield, and they were really impressed with the city of Bakersfield, with the accommodations that they stayed in. And, you know, sometimes up here as a council member, we're looking to nitpick on certain things that we want to make sure are perfect, but the comments that I received were so positive that our city is clean, attractive, and they were thoroughly, you know, surprised at how good it looked. And one friend that lived in San Diego said that really, he thought Bakersfield looked better in San Diego, minus the ocean. But thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Could you bring us that ocean for the next fiscal year?
I'm sorry?
Could you bring us the ocean for the next fiscal year? Mr. Lyman, thank you so much.
I don't know how much that's going to cost, but I can certainly talk to the manager about adding to our budget request.
Thank you so much for your efforts. I've always been so impressed with your small staff and what you're able to do, and I look forward to seeing the visitors from New Zealand this coming week.
Karen?
Thank you.
Karen, I have my button pushed. It's not showing up. Request to speak. David, again, you amaze us. I have to say, I was just listening to you again and watching you, it was coming to me that I'm just glad that you are still so young because we want you around for a long time. You and your team do a great job and just the entertainment that you bring. I'm an entertainment person and I just really appreciate it and very proud and excited to attend all that comes right here to our city. So keep up the good work and your ideas are very, very true. It takes money to make money, and that's what you are all about. You always have been about making money for our city. But yet, just the different ways, every possible way, you keep coming up with different ideas, wonderful ideas, and you certainly have my support, David, so thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lyman. Just a reminder to council members, when you press your button to speak, it takes a second to register. If you hit it again right after that, it cancels it. So just one time, give it a chance and it will light up. Okay, next speaker, who is our next department? AEG Rabobank.
It's always difficult to follow, David. All right. Mayor, thank you. Vice Mayor, Council, City Man... Okay, I'm sure he's coming back. City Manager, I'd like to introduce Ed Dorsey, who I'm sure you all know, lifelong resident, been with the city and the venues for 28 years. And also here is Nick Nguyen, who is our manager of marketing and public relations. So I'd like to start by saying that AEG is very, very appreciative of this opportunity, as am I personally. We love being here and we truly... We love being here, and we truly enjoy this. I've had the opportunity to work at several venues in several cities, and by far, the relationships, the commitment of not only yourselves, but Mr. Tandy and his staff is second to none, and that makes my job very easy, or shall I say easier, so. Next one. A little bit about our accomplishments this year. We've had 90 arena events. We've attracted over 360,000 visitors to the arena alone. Our convention center and theater has had 110 events with attendance over 125,000. We've had eight amphitheater events with attendance of 180,000, and our ice center's had over 25,000 visitors. Some of the highlights: Carrie Underwood, which is this coming Saturday, and I'm sure Councilmember Sullivan, you have your tickets.
Me and my great-granddaughter.
All right, perfect, perfect. If you don't mind a little shameless publicity, we do have a few tickets left, and so we'd like to certainly have another sellout. This is her fifth visit to Bakersfield. Gabriel Iglesias had a capacity crowd, and Cole Swindell. As David mentioned, this year, the CIF added the girls' competition, adding another day, another night in hotels, tremendous economic impact to the city. Our theater highlights: we had sold-out shows for Jack White, also a family show, Paw Patrol, and most recently, we had the classic red rocker Sammy Hagar, who drew a tremendous crowd. The Broadway series, probably the most successful season in five years, including a capacity crowd for the Jersey Boys. Our amphitheater, this past year, we hosted big-name entertainment such as Gary Allen, Ziggy Marley, Kenny G, Average White Band, and upcoming in June will be Bobby Brown and Belle Biv DeVoe, which will be June 14th, and of course, our annual July 4th celebration. The Valley Children's Ice Center highlights. This year, through the leadership of Scott Hay, who is our Director, we started the first-ever adaptive hockey program, which is thriving. These are individuals with many different types of challenges, a picture of one of our sled hockey players. Also, several of our youth hockey teams won both regional and state championships, including our PWE 11- and 12-year-olds and our high school team. Our figure skating program continues to grow, and our Learn to Skate program, every year, is growing. We want to go over some upcoming events: Carrie Underwood, which I've already mentioned, New Kids on the Block, and just announced today, slightly stupid, at the amphitheater, and also Jay Balvin, a reggaeton Latin artist. There's one on here that you haven't heard about yet, and it's not on sale, but I want to go ahead and give you that information. Pretty soon, you'll see that the Doobie Brothers will be announced, and will be going on sale for the amphitheater. I can't share with you, but there are two big country artists that we are working on. No promises, but if you're a country fan, you'll be very, very impressed. Probably the biggest news to share is the exciting news are the Condors. I'm sure you're all following along. Tonight is Game Six in San Diego. They must win. If they win, Game Seven will be Wednesday. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say if they win, when they win. Game Seven will be Wednesday, and when they clinch on Wednesday, Round Three, the first two games are Friday and Sunday, sandwiched around Carrie Underwood. The team went on the second-longest winning streak in American Hockey League history with 17 straight games. Attendance was up 4.3%. San Diego, which during the regular season was, I believe, the second-highest attendant franchise in the American Hockey League, we are actually outdrawing them in the playoffs. So the city of Bakersfield is really rallying around this team and coming out to support them. CSUB added club hockey this year, and they played their games at the arena, and we expect them back next year. Our two main tenants in the theater, our Broadway series was, as we mentioned, with Chicago Jersey Boys, Stop the Wizard of Oz. Our partner in the Broadway Series Jam Theatricals is working on next season. Really, the only name I can share with you are the Moody Blues, but there's more to come. And the Symphony completed their 44th year this past Saturday and drew over 1,000 people to the last performance. So it's great to see them alive and well. A little bit about our community engagement: we have a partnership with an organization called Pathpoint. We work with them, and they provide opportunities for individuals with disabilities, and we currently have three individuals that are part of our team. Annually, we support the Boys and Girls Club. We do a job shadow day with them. It's very successful and very popular. And then, we have, with our partners, donated over $100,000 in tickets to various organizations to help them raise money. Sustainability and conservation, very, very important to AEG. AEG has a standalone division that focuses on that. Some of the highlights, and I don't know if this is a highlight, but we added waterless urinals. Our recycling rates are up 15%. Our Recycles Day continues to grow, and we've created a partnership to help recycle some of our hazardous materials like light bulbs and paint. Guest Services and Security. Certainly, our priority is to provide a safe environment for our guests. Last September, we added walk-through metal detectors. Thank you for your support of this and funding. AEG also has a corporate security division, and they constantly monitor challenges around the globe, and they provide us with updates and reviews of best practices. Upcoming will be our annual Independence Day celebration. We have a budget of $75,000, and that is funded through the combination of sponsorships and private donations, as well as contributions from the city of Bakersfield. We are going to extend the fireworks show this year by a couple of minutes, and we're going to make it bigger and better, and we're working on the entertainment. So the budget for this year is operating income of $9.6 million, with operating expenses of just a hair over $10 million. So the net income or loss is $415,000, and as we point out here, the city losses are guaranteed never to exceed this amount of money, per the agreement with AEG. Now our Ask. We're going to break this down into two pieces. One is the kind of the annual CIP Ask, and these are what we would like to do. And number one would be the security upgrades, which we've started. This would be Phase Two with additional cameras, monitors. We would like to enhance the seating at the arena, the theater, and the ice center. Now, these aren't the seating in the bowl, this is the seating that's in our lobbies and our kind of our common areas, which we think are very important to continue to impress our guests and make them feel comfortable. There's a new piece of ice-making equipment. We'd like to paint the east and west side of the convention center. This is the side that faces the Marriott. The Truxton side was done last year, looks great. This is the side that the guests at the Marriott see. Also, we want to make a great impression when the artists come in on their buses. This is the side that they see. We would also like to continue improvements on the fan experience areas in the arena, and also, we would like to spend some money revitalizing the theater lobby, not to change the historical presence, but to add to it, and the total of these requests are $259,000. Now, the second piece of this is the Public Safety and Vital Services requests. We're proposing these, the following allocations, and we feel that they address four pieces of measure end. And this is keeping the public area safe and clean, addressing the fiscal stability of the city, creating jobs through economic development, and enhancing our amenities throughout the community. We're going to break this into two pieces. One is cost savings, which would address the fiscal stability of the city, and then also revenue and asset enhancements. Cost savings. Our number-two expense annually are utilities, electricity. This year, they will exceed $1 million. That's 10% of our operating budget. These costs are expected to increase by $100,000 next year. So we're proposing replacing all of the venue lighting fixtures with LED lights and fixtures. Also, is installing a new HVA system for the theater offices. We now run a 125-ton unit that operates half of the convention center and theater lobby. This would take that 125 to about a 40-ton unit. And also, a new water treatment system, and not to get into the weeds here, but it allows us to make ice with water that's 100 degrees as opposed to 140 degrees with significant savings. This investment is $815,000. The first-year savings alone would be $200,000 for a rate of return on this investment of a little over four years. Now, in these numbers, we have allocated for increased utility rates. Also, in the theatrical lighting fixtures, these light bulbs are getting harder and harder to come up with, to replace, and also, there's the carbon footprint and the improvements to the environment. Very important to the continued success of all of our venues. Now, we'd like to talk about revenue and asset enhancements. Our venues are very important to the quality of life to Bakersfield. They attract numerous visitors, and per what David was talking about, the arena, the theater, and the amphitheater are the engine that drives this. While our facilities are extremely well-maintained, they need significant upgrades to remain competitive, and these improvements will help retain and bring more out-of-towners to Bakersfield. The arena, our venues, we have the opportunity to be kind of the engine that helps revitalize downtown, and I know how important that is to everybody here. And as David said, let's help people spend their money. The first item is to replace the convention center floor at an estimated cost of $400,000. Now, the floor, a big chunk of it, I mean, the convention center is 57 years old. A big portion has never been touched. This picture shows you where rebarb is showing through. Not only is it unsightly, but it's unsafe. We also believe that there is an opportunity to increase the number of events that use that flat floor of the convention center. So while this is a significant investment and very important to the safety, we also feel it's going to have a return on the investment of approximately 10 years, and we're trying to be a little conservative in that number. The next item is renovate and update the convention center meeting rooms. Many of the, and you were here long before I, but these meeting rooms were built in 1994, and in 25 years, they've never been updated. So what you're looking at here is a picture of carpet that has tape on it, certainly not very sightly. We recently had two potential clients that declined to rent the facility based on its appearance and also the lack of AV equipment. This $120,000 will be used to get new carpet, new wall treatments, paint, ceiling. We feel that there's a real missed opportunity here with these meeting rooms, and we think that this money will be well-spent, and we believe that in the next between, in the next five years, we will add 12 to 30 events in the meeting room facility. And of course, what this means is more hotel nights, more TOT, all those things that David spoke about. The next item is replacing the dashboard system inside the arena. Now, the dashboards are the whiteboards in the glass. The dashboards have outlived their life by 10 years. We recently received a letter from the Edmonton Oilers requesting that we upgrade this dashboard system. The Oilers have made a real commitment, sorry about that, they've made a real commitment to the team. We have a winning team. It's a great season, no matter what happens, and I think it's important that we show our commitment. There's a safety issue to the players. If you were also, if you were at the game the other night, there were two bounces that came out in front of our goal, could have ended the game, so we're asking that we replace this system with a brand-new system. The next item is the bridge, and this is the pedestrian bridge over the railroad tracks. Approximately 40% of our guests, this is the first thing they see when they come to the arena. The paint is faded, it's rusted, this needs to be refurbished, and the estimated cost is $65,000. The next item I want to talk about is the amphitheater. Our goal is to double the events at the amphitheater. One of our challenges is selling seats. Now, currently, as you all know, we went rent chairs for the first two sections. That's expensive to rent, there's a labor cost involved, and then there are the green benches. Those are the hardest seats for us to sell. Our challenge is, we need to sell tickets. The more tickets we sell, the better we are able to attract more events. This would be step one in working towards truly expanding the content at the amphitheater. We're going to look, this is not necessarily the chair that we would select. We'll go through a process. Mr. Tandy, in his travels this past weekend, found an extremely attractive chair, but we will be looking at all options. There's a great opportunity at the amphitheater to grow the content there. The amphitheater, Paso Robles, started out with just a limited number of events. They're now up to 30 events annually. While I don't know that we can get there, we're certainly going to head in that direction. The next item is our concourse in our restrooms of the arena. As you know, we're in our 21st season, and while, again, everything has been well-maintained, these colors, the condition of the restrooms are dated and are badly needing an update. So our request is for $189,000 to repaint the entire concourse, to go into the restrooms, put in new flooring, paint, really bring the arena back to the jewel that it was 21 years ago. In AEG's experience, when any time venue goes over, takes on a significant renovation progress, it results in added ticket sales. People are excited again, and we think that this is extremely important as we continue to try to bring more and more content to the city of Bakersfield. And the last item is adding an additional LED ring to our scoreboard. Two years ago, we updated the LED panels, the main panels, very, very well-received, very exciting. This opportunity with that bottom panel that shows AT&amp;T, not only will that give the center-hung scoreboard a feel, but there's also a revenue opportunity where we'll be able to sell sponsorships on that bottom ring, and we feel not only will it give a better appearance, but there's also a terrific opportunity to sell that, to generate more revenues. As David said, it takes dollars, it takes money to make money. So I'm asking your consideration... So I'm asking your consideration on these important improvements. We want to be part of the solution to revitalize downtown. Your arena, your theater and convention center, that is the focal point. We want to bring more people down. We want to increase the TOT revenues. It's good for anyone, everyone, so, thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Just press it one time.
There you go. Councilmember Sullivan.
Great, I did it right. Yeah, thank you. Steve, you know, I gave some of the credit for our entertainment to David, and of course, we know that he is the one that promotes.
Yes.
But appearance is so important. They are the, our finest, greatest, most expensive amenities in our city, our arena, our convention center, and of course, then out at Riverwalk. But we're getting great entertainment, and yes, the appearance is so important, and it's so, you know, there are a lot of dollars that are needing to be spent, but it's because we haven't had the money for many years, and it has gotten to the point where it's called deferred maintenance. So we've got to take the bid and get it all up to par, and to see the tape on the carpet in the one room, that's pitiful, and we need to just make sure that that is not in our beautiful building. So, anyway, you, and Steve, I appreciate the fact that when there's an event, you are there. You know, you're a very visible, a very visible presence, greeting people, also just making sure that everything is going well, so that's, and also, Steve, that's very noticeable and appreciated by people that know who you are and why you're there. So, your support and hard work is very appreciated and...
Well, I have a great staff, and I couldn't do it without this gentleman who's...
Yes, yes.
I know it doesn't look like he's been with us 28 years, but...
No, it doesn't.
Although, David showed a picture from, what, 20 years ago, when you had hair?
Well, anyway, we...
And as we've said, it's not only the deferred maintenance, but it's the opportunity to grow and to expand our content.
And it does bring excitement.
These items are important to that, so thank you.
Yeah, and then, of course, it'll be in the paper that we were undergoing a facelift and how much, how wonderful everything looks, so it definitely does pay off, so, anyway...
And thank you for all the tickets you buy.
Yes, well, yes, I am a good customer.
You are a great customer.
I enjoy everything I attend, and there's a lot of good stuff to attend.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. I just appreciate your presentation and your conversation about the improvements, the potential improvements for the convention center and the arena in the context of downtown revitalization. We know that the more we are able to attract new conferences and conventions and bring more people to Bakersfield, to downtown Bakersfield, the better off it is for local business owners, local restaurant owners. It's a good thing for the continued success of downtown, and so, I 100% support it. I appreciate it.
We've got to get people off the couches and get them downtown.
That's right, and we've got to modernize our facilities. These are our assets that are important to our entire community and ones that we should be very proud of, and we should continue to market to the entire outside world, and so, I think it's an important investment.
I've plugged myself into the Downtown Business Association, and so I believe in this full-heartedly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eckerson. You mentioned a couple of clients who did not come here. I'm aware of one related to the California Hispanic Chamber because of the condition. Do you have an estimate on the economic impact of what we might have lost?
I really don't, and I wouldn't want to even hazard a guess, so, but thank you.
Well, certainly, we need to have an arena and a convention center that is conducive to attracting people, so thank you.
Mayor, as you know, the tremendous history of the theater, and we want to keep that going, so, I don't know if everyone knows, but the Rolling Stones played here, Fleetwood Mac, and, Ed, I'm not sure you were here in the '60s for that, but, thank you.
Thank you, and I don't see the request for, press the button.
Um...
Maybe raise your hand.
You know, I also wanted to mention how great the facility looks on the outside. The last time I was there, it was, of course, you know, all lit up, and the year-round lighting is just, is just a great asset. So, it, people driving by, they certainly notice our facility, but the people that are there, it's just very exciting and very lively, and so we're certainly on the right track, so I appreciate you bringing this list of needs that we need to...
Councilmember, you deserve a lot of the credit for those lights. Now, they are a challenge to maintain them, and I won't go into that, but, thank you for that. We appreciate it.
It is, it is exciting down there, and it definitely adds to just the feel, and so, it's great. I love going there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Eckerson. Let's take a 10-minute break and return at 1:50 for the most scintillating presentation of the day, Financial Services. Mr. Smith, are you prepared for that?
Mayor Go, councilmembers filling in for Mr. Smith. Randy McKeegan, Assistant Finance Director for the City of Bakersfield, given the opportunity once again to present the operating budget for the upcoming fiscal year for the Financial Services Department. You'll be pleased to know that this is a much more, probably the most abbreviated presentation you'll be hearing this afternoon, so. Just to kind of touch on what we do in our department, I'm not going to read this word for word, but that first line says, "We provide support." We provide support and service to the city council, to the city departments, to allow them to meet their goals and the services of the city citizens, and by meeting their needs related to financial-related and accounting processes for the city as a whole. To do that, we have a department broken into four separate divisions. From left to right, the first division is the Treasury Division, handles cash receipts and investments. Our Accounting and Reporting Division handles accounts payable, accounts receivable, payroll, and other reported-related matters. We have a Purchasing Division, who handles procurement for, again, servicing the city's departments for procuring services and materials. And we also have a Real Property, or Property Management Division, that handles both acquiring properties and actually selling surplus properties. Within those four divisions, we have a total of 31 employees within our complement. As you can see there, we have reduced our complement by one from previous years. That is related to a real property agent that retired this year. That individual primarily focused on trip-related activities, and those acquisitions are no longer as heavy as they were, and so it was determined that that position was no longer needed, so we reduced our complement by one this year, upcoming fiscal year. Taking a page from the Visit Bakersfield presentation, beyond titles on a org chart or numbers on a complement list, these are some of the individuals that have helped us to meet those goals that we touched on at the start, and have helped us achieve some of the most notable accomplishments this past fiscal year. Once again, we receive the Certificate of Achievement in Excellence in Financial Reporting for the 37th consecutive year from the GFOA. This award is given to entities that really go beyond the scope of what's required from governmental accounting and really present reports that are more, have more disclosures, have more transparency, and again, provide more information to the public on the operations of, the financial operations of the city. Our Property Management Division acquired, as they do every year, properties, residential and commercial properties for the needs of the various departments, whether it be for utilities, transportation programs, projects, or transportation projects, and parks and development services projects. We have continued to be participants in a rebate revenue program. We've received over $100,000 in rebates related to purchases made by departments through a Visa and MasterCard system that's offered through our financial institution, and we also get rebates related to payments we make to vendors through a Visa and MasterCard program. Again, we're receiving this every year, and it continues to give us additional revenue in the general fund. And once again, the Finance Department manages the Retire Medical Program Trust Fund. Currently, the trust that we have in place leaves us a deposit of a total of $70 million. When you compare that to our most recent actuarial determined liability of $140 million, we are currently about 50% funded, puts us above average of other entities that have this type of liability, that currently sits at an average of 22.5% for other entities with OPEB liabilities. Moving on to the upcoming fiscal year, kind of touching back on what we had discussed earlier from the city manager's budget presentation, we will continue to make a look at improvements specifically related to technological improvements to how we operate, how we take payments. We're looking at expanding the number, the types of payments we can take via the web, via online payments. We're looking at expanding the types of, how we do bids and purchasing and procurement. Currently, we require a lot of bids to come in with hard copies, and the system we have in place allows us to take digital copies of bids, and that makes much more sense just in time and processing. We're also going to be looking at reducing paperwork by improving our review processes within our department by allowing things to be processed digitally versus having a hard copy sent between departments, again, to expedite the processes and again, help serve the city departments better. We will continue to acquire properties as needed for various projects within the city, and we will also continue to do our annual reports, whether it be to the state or federal agencies, and we have, will continue to apply for that GFOA award, again, looking for the 30th consecutive year of our award for our CAFR. New this year, as required by the council action and as stated in the PSVS, or Public Safety and Vital Services, measure, we will be doing a separate report for the, that revenue source, showing the revenues and the expenditures of that particular revenue source for the upcoming year. And again, that will be reviewed by a separate audit, a separate auditing firm, and they will be determining whether we expanded those funds within that meeting of the 13 guidelines of the ballot measure. So that is a new report that we'll be submitting to council. Now, really what makes the budget work, and that's, of course, the numbers of our budget for the Financial Services Department. As you can see, this presents our budget comparing it to last year's actual costs, the adopted budget for the current year, and then comparing the current year budget to the proposed budget for the upcoming year. The top section in orange shows our budget at close to $3.9 million, broken out by function, as most departments within the city have. The primary driver of costs is personnel services or salaries and benefits, and that is actually showing a decrease of close to 6% from prior year, and that's primarily related to that position we discussed earlier that was being eliminated. We also have an increase in operating costs. We are looking at increasing educational assistance and training for our staff in our department to improve retention, to improve the knowledge, skills, and abilities within that department. We've had a number of individuals who have retired and left, and we really need to build back up our knowledge and skills within that department. And then, the lower section breaks out that budget by funding source. As you can see, the primary funding source of our budget, $3.2 million approximately, is the general fund. And now, moving forward, as we tend to do, we're going to touch a little bit on some citywide-related items. We talked about that OPEB liability earlier, and this is a chart we've shown in numbers of years now, showing the progress of how we funded that OPEB liability. That top line, that red line, shows the actuarial determined liability at $140 million. The bottom line shows the funding status of that trust fund. Currently, at the end of last fiscal year, June 2018, it's at $64.5 million or so, showing that we are, our current liability sits at approximately $73 million. I touched on it earlier, that the actual trust fund balance as of our last statement date is actually $70 million, so hopefully, it will continue on. Marketing conditions today sort of give me some pause, but it'll continue on, and we'll continue to have by the end of this coming fiscal year a 50% funded status. And now, continuing on, this relates to a big item that's always on people's minds, PERS. This shows the progress of the estimated PERS payments for the next six years. What we're showing here is a comparison. Council action allowed us to increase our general fund reserves, which allows us now to, at the beginning of the year, pay the unfunded liability portion that's required from PERS, by PERS, upfront versus monthly. And that's allowing us to save on interest payments. So what we see here is, in the blue, is what we would have paid for PERS if we didn't have that lump-sum payment, and in red, what the upfront payment allows us to, in essence, save every year, again, by making that payment. It averages, well, it ranges from about $870,000 to $1.5 million in savings, and the plan currently is to roll those savings into the general fund reserves each year as we realize those savings. With that, I'm available for questions, and also Nelson Smith, who is way in the back there, if you have questions for him as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McKeegan. Vice Mayor, please.
Thank you. Could you go back to the OPEB slide, please? So, and maybe I'll direct us to the city manager. If we front-end our payments on OPEB, could we reduce our liability like we do with PERS?
I'm sorry.
If we front-end payments on OPEB, and to try and reduce that, would that do the same thing as we did with PERS, or it wouldn't?
Well, we currently make, I'm sorry, we, Mayor, Vice Mayor, we currently make payments on the OPEB.
Let me try, may I? PERS, of course, is a third party and has the practice of charging a 7% interest per month if we don't make the payment once a year. We control, we, the city council, and this organization controls this trust fund, and so there is no interest charge component. If you were to advance payments, you would, you would lower your unfunded liability, which has a positive impact on our financial reporting, but there wouldn't be a cash savings associated with it. You would, you would, you would get it paid off in a period of time less than the current payoff time is, and it would be a positive thing, I think, but it, but it doesn't have the auxiliary avoidance of interest costs.
Okay, I tell you what, separated this, could you just follow up with the council and let us know, you know, what that benefit would be, if any? Thank you.
Councilmember Freeman.
First of all, congratulations for actually cutting someone. No one has, we haven't seen that, and when we're growing, you're operating more efficiently with your people, so hats off to you for that. I'd like to request that myself, probably other councilmembers would like a copy of the CalPERS and the medical benefits slide. It isn't in my little tab.
Okay.
I just like separately, those are...
You can definitely do that.
Nice things I like to keep aware of, and it made me think of one of the things we really didn't have time to do last year with all the measure N. But to get back to a discussion of how, I even, you know, submitted this as a goal, how we can take the percentage we spend towards retirement as part of, I mean, all pension and everything, as part of our general fund, I don't know, I can't remember what the percentage is, but whatever it is today, and we, we come up with strategies to hold it constant. I really don't like the feeling we've sort of adopted of helplessness, because, you know, the state seems to control everything, CalPERS controls everything, the legislature won't let us through this, of course, but I'm not sure we exhausted all the creative things we might do to hold those pension costs, and I think that needs to be something we all, with the help of finance, think about this year. There may be all sorts of creative strategies of things that we haven't thought of because we haven't really, that we can control. we haven't really, that we can control here. And I think we, I think we're obligated to do that. We, we can't have another bombshell when they say, well, we're going to do six and three quarters, there's another five million a year, on top of all the five million a year already, it's just going to blow the city up if it happens. So I think for fiscal stability, that's one of our more important challenges, in that we should really start focusing on it next year, now that we have some time. So I guess that's just sort of a editorial comment, but like to see that.
Mayor, go, Councilmember Freeman. I know you mentioned at last council meeting about the Section 115 trust, and that's something we're going to be looking at.
Yeah, that's just one example.
That's just, exactly.
We need to talk about it.
That's one example.
What would the effect of that be? There may be ten other strategies we haven't thought about that are within our control here, as opposed to CalPERS or the legislature. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions on the OPEB. We were making payments in the past, and I know when things got bad, we did not make those payments. Where are we at in the future on that?
We will still, Mayor, go, Councilmember Smith, but we will still be making the required contributions per our actuarials report. So we still make, and then we will, next year, we plan on and budget, have budgeted making the required contributions.
Councilmember Smith, at one point, we were ahead.
Right.
We had advanced paid ahead of the required or the, it's not, not totally required, but the amortization schedule as, as it comes out, and, and when we cut back, we just got back on track. So I think Councilmember Smith's question
Are we going to go back to
Was, was advanced paying again, and we'll provide an analysis of that.
Okay, thank you. My other question was our, the parking garage in general, I'd like to get an update on that. Is that doing good, not so good, better?
Well, currently, the parking garage is still operating in a deficit. We require a general fund transfer to really, to balance the budget, and it's going to occur this year as well. I believe it's sixty-five thousand dollars related to what we're getting from the general fund. So there's still some operational issues related to that, but yeah, it is not operating to full capacity, as you might want to, might say.
So that's basically for security? Is that
Yeah, the issue that's causing that is we've added security, another, another, a shift of security in the
Right.
In the, in early morning, late mornings, all the way till about three in the morning on weekends.
Great, thank you.
Okay. I don't see any other requests for comments. Thank you very much for your presentation. And now, the most well-dressed department. Thank you for the very good public safety presentation this weekend. It seemed like families were very engaged. I saw children who were just delighted and trying on those fire outfits, and I did, I decided to try one on too, since we're about the same size.
Do we get a picture?
I think so.
Got to have it.
Thank you, Chief. Go ahead.
Okay, good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, City Council. Anthony Gallegoza, your Bakersfield Fire Chief. Honored and privileged today to present to you the Bakersfield Fire Department budget proposal for 2019-20. First, we'll start off by accomplishments over in 2018-19 fiscal year. We start off with the ALS Paramedic Assessment Engine. What that does is enhance services to Bakersfield, throughout Bakersfield, being able to have that Advanced Life Support Assessment Engine rendered throughout Bakersfield, and it's also helped critically for our firefighters to get trained in those paramedics that we do have on the job, because we do have rescue paramedics and also hazardous material medics. Also, grant funding that we had received. It assisted with mobile data computers, as well as tablet software updates, and also wildland, our protection gear that we take out in the wildland throughout the year. Also, we are in an accreditation process with the Center for Public Safety Excellence, and what that will do, it'll help with us in effectiveness and efficiency, and hoping to be one of the few departments within the state of California that is accredited. And we will see the benefits of that throughout the year, once we reach that certain goal. We have completed five of the eight modules in the process, and right now, we're getting excellent feedback, and we're hoping to complete that by the end of the year, beginning of the year. Go back. Also, with our social media, we are very active with our social media. Many of you are on there. You've seen us through Facebook, Instagram, Twitter. We continue with our public information officer, who stays very involved. He's out there every single day. We always bring ideas to see what's new, what we can get a message, safety messages to the public, and also to see what their Bakersfield Fire Department, every single day, what their investment is doing, their tax dollars, and we think that's critical and important. Accomplishments for the Certified Unified Program Agency, which is hazardous materials inspections, we've completed fourteen hundred sixty-three of those hazmat inspections, along with three hundred seventy inspections as far as restaurants, and two hundred twenty-three licensed care facility inspections. With the help of my operations chief, battalion chiefs, and members throughout the department, we have created sixteen working task force groups, and that could be anything from wellness to fire operations, wildland, and it's allowed everybody within our department to become an active member and, and progress our department so much more with the right ideas, look for funding, look for situations where we might be able to achieve grants also, and just have a better operational standing within the department. We've also, in those sixteen task forces, we work with other groups within the city, whether it be technological services, risk, fleet, and HR. We've continued with progressive recruitment, which is one of my major goals, through local veterans groups, and also, there's been a couple of those that we can find those veterans coming out of the service, they can take orders and accept orders, and that's perfect for our paramilitary organization. We've also reached out to high schools and Bakersfield College in an effort to continually recruit local talent so that we can bring them onto our fire department. Also, we've seen that that will help with retention in the future because they're, they're home-bred and their families are here. We continue with succession planning as well. We've completed deputy chiefs exams, engineers exam throughout the year, and also, we have an academy graduating June seventh, which will fill some of the holes of the vacancies that we currently have. And we've also begun firefighter recruitment. You will eventually see a recruitment video where yours truly will do a version in English and one in Spanish, and because we see it as important, we've been in a good relationship with Telemundo, as well as the various TV stations, to be able to get the word out so that we can progressively recruit within the city of Bakersfield. Also, have developed a monthly newsletter, and that has improved greatly our department communications from all aspects of our department. It's even, we've got it out to our retirees so they can feel part of the community, which we've saw, we've visualized them being drawn also into the community, back in the community, getting involved in certain situations, as you saw with the Public Safety Day event that we had recently, and it's been exciting to have them back. Additional accomplishments, of course, we have our Fourth of July Task Force. We've, sixty-three citations were issued this past year. Enforcement teams will be out July third, fourth, and fifth, as usual. And also, joint agency training. We've worked with PD, we've worked with Kern County Fire, as well as Halls, and we do things such as SWAT, high-rise firefighter survival, CPR, active shooter, and partnering up with all those different agencies has been very beneficial. It advances our training as well as theirs, and the relationship building is what is crucial. Also, with the SMART 911 implementation, this will help protect families by providing crucial information at the time of dispatch, and we see that as being able to just get that onboard and be able to advance that into the future. Proud to say, we have been part of nine deployments as far as master mutual aid. Up there, you'll see the list, and those are the nine that we've been involved in from floods to major fires. So your Bakersfield Fire, city firefighters are active well throughout the state. Going into the adopted 2018-19, and also the proposed comparable for 1920, you will see it's broken down into funds, general fund, as well as our COOPA fund, as well as the Public Safety and Vital Services. That has shown a increase of nine point two-three percent due to Public Safety and Vital Services and additional to the general fund throughout the year. Next, you'll see broken down into salaries and benefits, these budgets as far as operating, and also the additional capital that you see totals forty-four million, seven hundred forty-two thousand, seven hundred six dollars. Once again, even more broken down into, as we break it down into different branches, the fire suppression branch, fire safety, fire administration, and also the Public Safety and Vital Services, so that you could see what is being added as we go along into the general fund, as opposed to the general fund. The next few slides that I'm going to show you will actually show you the bang-for-your-buck that you get from your Bakersfield firefighters and the fire department as a whole. You'll see these comparable departments that we get throughout the city, at different cities within the state of California, that show their different stations and also their budget, and you will see the comparable budgets that we rank eight out of the, our nine comparables. In this next slide, even more, it shows how the responses and the different variants of responses that we do have, Bakersfield ranks very high in fires, but you'll see that we're third overall with those comparable departments, while our budget remains at, at eight. And this, this allows you to visualize how busy of a department, which I know council is very aware of that, because you see us very active in the community, also in the public safety realm, as being able to see that we are third at forty. We held it twelve percent, or actually eleven percent increase over the last two years in call volume. Additionally, this is an interesting graph slide where you can see the average budget for the comparable departments, put together is fifty-three point eight million, while Bakersfield Fire holds it forty point nine with Public Safety and Vital Services. We will increase that, but we will still remain eight among the ten. But being able to see that we have a thirteen million dollars more as our comparable departments. In the second, you'll see that there's twelve thousand plus responses compared to the average department. So Bakersfield Fire is obviously running forty thousand on, on average per year currently, while the other departments put together twenty-eight thousand and a half. Next to that, you'll see budget divided by response. Even more interesting, this is over eight hundred dollars less per response. So as you see those forty thousand plus responses, the BFD per response is averaging, if you divided budget by response, it would be a thousand four, while the other departments in a comparable put together is one thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine per response. Next, this just breaks down our call volume. Our fire load increases every year as far as fire calls. Those are grouped together with explosions, but always, emergency medical will always be the highest. It has always stood that way over time with most departments, while ours can range anywhere from seventy to eighty percent. Most departments anywhere from eighty-five to ninety-two percent. Another interesting slide, as far as your fire suppression services, you'll see that comparing, comparing 2008 to 2018. In 2008, we had a staffing of two hundred and twelve personnel. In eighteen, we had two hundred, of course, with the Public Safety and Vital Services measure, that will increase. But to show you the comparisons and the need, in 2008, you'll see our fires at one thousand four thirty-two, while our fires increased to two thousand two hundred eighty-nine. EMS is increased exponentially, as you'll see in the middle graph, the bar, and also with total incident counts being at forty thousand, while in 2008, you were looking at about twenty-seven thousand. Okay, to be honest, this is where the excitement starts for me, seeing that as the fire chief, being able to thank the city council and also the citizens of Bakersfield, because the Bakersfield Public Safety and Vital Services measure is going to be crucial to your public safety, as far as your firefighter safety, and also the citizens of Bakersfield, and what that's going to do as we phase in over time, and we build to realize the positions that we'll be receiving, not just to put positions back into place, these are needed, and over time, they've been needed for quite a long time. And I believe that as we begin and to see these realized, and over time, it's going to be even more exciting to see the, the things we could do as a fire department, our response times, because that's what's important to Bakersfield, is that we arrive when mom, dad, anybody else has an issue medically, or their house is on fire, that we're able to get there, not just on time, but effectively, with the amount of resources that we need, and this will allow us to do it over time as we phase in. And these were instant, these will be instant help, these positions, as they assist us. So just breaking it down, the eleven positions, we're going into a little more detail. You'll see one deputy fire chief, six fire engineers, which will be the light engines, which you've seen are just a smaller engine, but they really get us out four by four as far as accidents, and you'll look at it as far as grass fires, and it allows us to get to places where a regular fire engine cannot get to. Also, the arson battalion chief, we've been much needed. You'll see the statistics as we go along in that, and also our two fire dispatchers, being able to obtain two new ones, be able to fill the positions and the call overload that they have currently. And also, one training captain who will assist with quality assurance that we've needed for quite some time. In all of this, this will allow us to maintain our Class II ISO rating, which we believe is crucial to overall business insurance. We've discussed that numerous times, you've received information on that, and that will allow us to continue in that. The first position is the deputy fire chief, that when able to get that in the office, there's such an overload within the front office, this individual will help us by controlling and administering grants, quality assurance oversight, and also management of the Center for Public Safety Excellence accreditation, which we see as only helping our department more and more into the future, also with COOPA administration oversight. And what that deputy chief will, will do with the Center for Public Safety Excellence, he will develop a five-year plan, which will give us a strategic plan, looking into the future as we progress as a fire department, and this will optimize the department's effective, effectiveness and efficiencies, as I've stated earlier. Then, boots on the ground, the six engineers that will maintain, and they will assist greatly as far as light engines for Station One and Station Eight. As we know, we need, in the downtown location, that will be where the first light engine is, and that will assist with the river bottom fires that are so difficult to get to, and with an additional manpower and just wildland fires throughout and rescues. Engine Eight will be in the northeast, which will help the Rio Bravo area bluffs, and be able to allow us to get into areas that we have to send manpower down and where many injuries occurred due to that. At the last, you'll see two in, two out. What that is, is an ISO, or an OSHA regulation, I'm sorry, that if we have two individuals going into assist with a rescue, an unknown rescue, but maybe there's a car outside, we don't know if there's anybody inside, you have to have two people outside. If there's an active rescue, we know somebody's inside, we can do it. But if we're unsure, we have to allow to stay outside till we have two on backup. And right now, we'd be able to do that with this, these additional personnel and this light engine coming into play, it will help us all the more to be able to be effective in those unknown times where we're not sure if somebody's inside. We will make an immediate search, because your Bakersfield firefighters are an aggressive, Next would be the arson battalion chief investigator. Since 2009, we, in 2009, we had three investigators, we now currently have two. During that time, there's a two-hundred percent increase in arson-related arrests, ninety-seven percent increase in arson-related fire investigations. This is, these next slides are alarming considering the arson issue within the city of Bakersfield, but the, not having the amount of investigators needed, but through the Public Safety and Vital Services measure, we will receive the additional, and that is seeing that we do have fires investigative of three hundred and forty-eight, and that is a large number with any city that you might be within. Next, this just breaks down fire loss, as far as, we've had three fire deaths, seven civilian fire injuries, and also firefighter injuries of thirty. And I believe in, in many instances, those injuries will go down just because of the additional personnel that will be on scene, the access we will have through the light engines, that'll be crucial. You'll see the total value saved by firefighters, Bakersfield ninety-six million, total fire loss of just under fifteen and a half million. What's important about this slide is you'll see at the bottom where it states forty-five arson-related arrests with twenty-three convictions, while understaffed for many years, our arson investigators are the best of the best. the best of the best. They, through that conviction rate, they have a conviction rate of 51.11% through it all, while the national average is only 21.7%. They work hard, they get the job done, they're very well-trained. Next is the, the two additional dispatchers. Some alarming numbers that are here is 2005, our dispatchers answered a total of 148,205 emergency and non-emergency calls. You'll see last year, that number's 412,654 emergency and non-emergency calls, 178% increase. We can assist with that by putting the two dispatchers in there and assist with the overload and the turnaround of certain dispatchers in there due to being overworked, because when there's sick leave or somebody coming, they have to, they're training them in and out and having them come in and out. And it's, it's tough on the dispatchers because many of the supervisors are answering, answering those emergency calls instead of supervising an area. And of course, they'll do that anyways, but that's their main job now is to answer emergency calls and non-emergency calls, because you have to call the water department on certain issues, PG&E, and that's become an issue to, that we need supervisors within that level to actually supervise. With that, our emergency communications, a regional radio system upgrade is a goal for the future, a continued computer aided dispatch upgrade along with continued upgrades to our mobile data devices. And with that, as I stated, we will hire and train two new fire dispatchers because of the Public Safety and Vital Services measure. That being said, we're going to adopt a Training and Quality Assurance Officer, which most departments have throughout the state. This will, it'll help with OSHA regulation compliance, patient care reporting, personnel training reports, coding accuracy. But even more important is, is that it will avoid negative exposure to the city of Bakersfield by making sure that our training records are accurate and also we're complying with all OSHA regulations. Fire Training Division Goals, we have BFD Recruit Academy looking at in 2021 to graduate March 2nd, 2020, due to the Public Safety and Vital Services measure, being able to get those additional firefighters out in force, maintain joint all-of-dry facility training, and also continued promotional exams, promote firefighter wellness and joint training with the different entities such as BPD, Kern County Fire, and Hall Ambulance. Capital improvements, looking at fire station kits rehabs through the general fund, fire captains' office rehabilitation through Public Safety and Vital Services, and additional through the Public Safety and Vital Services, many asphalt and concrete parking area replacements, and also roof repairs. And you'll be able to see some of the pictures of deferred maintenance over time and things that need to be addressed, such as you'll see in the bottom corner, a plymo vent system, which will help with diesel particulates for wellness for firefighters and cancer Fire Safety Services, the goals for 1920, to assign and track over 2,500 company-level inspections, implement new fuel tanks, reduce fire through inspections, education enforcement, and focus attention on high-risk occupancies. Looking towards the future, this is awarded grant funding from Homeland Security, and you could see that will help us with our patient care computer software and also our Department Operations Center and the 14 for gas monitors that we're going to put on each engine that will help with civilian and firefighter safety as well. Going into disaster planning, the goals are to maintain our National Incident Management System along with our State Emergency Management System compliance, strategic planning, and Department Operations, I stated earlier. But the last one's interesting because it's a county-wide hazardous mitigation plan that Deputy Chief Frando is dealing with right now, and it's earthquake, flood, man-made, and natural disaster issues. And eventually, this will be a FEMA required for grant acquisition. I just wanted to mention the fleets, put the Public Safety PSVS next to the vehicles. Just want to thank council for taking action soon and be able to begin and start the purchase so that we could start these positions as soon as possible and being able to get those individuals in action as soon as possible. In regard to that, this, outside of that, is the fire engine 15 replacement, and you can see the others as far as a survive air compressor unit, which is vital for our department. Our BFD Reserve firefighter program, we have 25 on roster, 36 hours they have to maintain, minimum to work a month mandated training. Also, they're requested and voluntold to do community service throughout the month. As you know, that's very big with me, and over the past five years, I'm proud to say 24 reserve firefighters have become full-time firefighters throughout the state. Also, we have the BFD Firefighter Explorer Program that's gone, that is maintained through the Boy Scouts of America, and they're just, they're observance, a 15 to 21-year-old, and they also have to train, and they assist us with many community services projects. Going into community service, one thing under my administration that is crucial is we must enhance public education and public information to the public, and we have done that, and we will continue to do it at a higher rate. Enrich interagency, media, and community interface, which I believe we have done, and also refine public education and community presentations. Many of our presentations of public information is antiquated, and we are doing that right now to make sure that that's updated and upgraded for our public and be able to understand what their Bakersfield Fire Department and their firefighters do daily. Okay, before I start the video, to state our mission statement, the mission of the Bakersfield Fire Department is to protect, engage, and inspire a safe community while delivering legendary customer service. In my mission statement, legendary customer service is crucial. That's what it should be about, is what our firefighters deliver on a daily basis. And in saying that, I, Chief Frando and Chief Martinezon didn't know I was going to say this, as I pulled up to the station to get ready for today, the customer service has to start at the top. I pull up, and Chief John Frando is in the front, and there's a elderly woman with a battery-powered wheelchair, and she can't move. She's in the middle of the street, in the middle of the sun. And I pull, as I'm driving by, I see him pick, talks to her, and he's pushing her through. He pulls in the back of the station, puts her in shade, plugs the battery-powered wheelchair in, gets her, and makes sure she get, and then Chief Martinezon runs out, makes sure she gets some water, gets a firefighter to come over and look if she needs any medical attention. It needs to start at the top and work its way down. And if they're doing it, we expect our firefighters to do it and be legendary in their customer service every day. So that being an example and this being another example.
All right, how's he doing? You all right?
So, that's just mostly for your enjoyment, so I'll take any questions at this time.
Thank you, Chief.
You bet.
Do we have any requests to speak? Congratulations, Councilmember Sullivan. It did. You're next.
Excellent, Chief. Very, very well presented. And would you identify each one of your department with you?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Battalion Chief Bill Ballard.
Mm-hmm.
Deputy Chief John Frando. Deputy Chief Trevor Martinezon. And of course, I couldn't do without my business manager, Tony Crosby.
Oh, great. Yes, thank you. Names are helpful.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief. Just a couple of questions, or first a comment, it was great to see the arson unit get back up. I remember when that got cut down, and it's a big problem in the community, and hope to see that worked out better. Also, just a question on the SMART 911, about how many do you have signed up on that?
Do we have a number on that? Yeah, absolutely.
Mayor Go, Councilmember Smith, we don't have those statistics on how many people are signed up. One of the things that we are doing is actively marketing SMART 911. As you may or may not know, that program was actually brought into this area by behavioral health. Law enforcement first took hold and bought into the program and got all the software updates necessary to support SMART 911. Bakersfield Fire Department just recently was able to acquire the software updates to allow us access to SMART 911 information. And one of the things that we did at the Public Safety Day on Saturday was help market SMART 911 for the community members.
Great. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Chief, you mentioned that we're third in the number of responses. It looks like the fire responses are about 7% of the overall. Is that commensurate with other fire departments, the ones that you were comparing to?
No, it is not. Our, our fire calls are generally, I mean, if you want to go on a 100% scale, it's probably about anywhere from 7 to, can be 15%, because other, certain departments up north, they may have upwards of 92% of theirs are EMS. And then, then it'll be all other calls, and you maybe have 2 and 1/2% of fire.
Thank you very much for all that you do. We appreciate you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Thank you. Mr. Chairperson, see, you have been patiently waiting here for a long time, all the way to the end. I noticed you missed public comments. Would you care to make any comments?
I would, please, Major.
Councilmembers, any comments? Final comments? Seeing none, we are adjourned at 2:42.